Maybe we wouldn't have any issues.
Right.
So, we want to get to that for next meeting, so. We need to vote on that? To give Fred permission, or you guys all set with that?
Census?
Okay. Yeah, that way.
I'll check with him maybe tomorrow.
Okay.
And find out, and then I can get back to you.
Alright, that sounds good. Just save a little so we can have a new Z party. But, no, it's that way we can get that squared away. And then, you know, put that to bed, then we can start working on what we decide to do in January.
Yeah.
And go from there. I got an email at the last, I don't know if you got it, from Jeff Quark.
Oh, no, I didn't see that one.
It's, McCary Way is paved.
It is, okay.
It was a little later than he wanted, but he got it. Because his paper happens to be the same paper I have, and he's not doing me any favors either.
Oh.
Just the weather. You know, they basically, two weeks ago, they lost a week.
With all the rain?
With all the rain, and then the weekend, because they tried to make it up on the weekend, and it rained through the weekend. So, they can't, they weren't able to make it up. But as far as that goes.
Do minutes?
Yeah.
I've got, I've got a couple of, a couple of things. Page, page two, about a third of the way down, paragraph starting off with Mr. Cooper. And one, two, three, fourth line. It starts, the fourth line down starts with "are moved," and it should be moved with a D.
Second page, second page.
That's what I'm on, which?
Third paragraph.
Third paragraph?
Terry Coop, uh, Mr. Cooper.
Okay.
And at the fourth line down.
Yeah.
Reads "are," and it should be moved.
Oh, okay.
Instead of move.
Anytime poles are moved.
Okay.
Okay. And then, two thirds of the way down, starts off, paragraph starts off with Joel Hughes.
Yeah.
And it gets very confusing, and so, my thought is to strike.
It's this one, right?
Oh, this one, okay.
Yeah, that one.
My thought is to have it, Joel Hughes said he went to Eversource first, asked them, and then strike to tell them they requested. So, it should read, "ask them to have the poles on their property replaced in order to have the power."
Okay.
Okay, and then, the very bottom. Fred McGarry said the statute does not indicate that, and inserting approval to cut. And would continue with trees need to be, and strike out "cut" and leave first. And then add, "before the poles are installed."
Okay.
So, it would read. Fred McGarry said the statute does not indicate that approval to cut trees need to be first before the poles are installed.
Yeah, okay.
But I did, they, Eversource wanted an email, and I think I sent you a copy of it, Jane, on that one. But they wanted an email from somebody on the board to just say that what we, what action we took. And I said that, yes, we approved them to cut up to six trees, and that they, next time, they should come in to us before they put any poles in. So, we're not faced with the same situation that we had here. And that's all I had. So, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 27th with the changes noted tonight.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. So, looks like we got a letter from Jim Raymond about Glenda.
Yep.
Glenda Zora, right?
And, and my thought was, if it's all right with, with the rest of the board, to, I'll just drop, drop this email off with her. To let, let her look at it and see what she wants to do.
Yeah. That's what we need to do.
Okay.
And then she can come back and say what I, what she wants.
Right.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Because that makes sense, because at this point, until we know what she wants to do, we're wasting time.
Right, okay, I'll do that this weekend.
Okay. We can start with a conceptual.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Scott's here.
Oh, you want to, Mr. Cross is not coming in, so.
No, he's not coming in tonight. He's, he's rescheduled for December 8th.
Ah, I'll be on vacation.
Well, I suppose if we tried, we could probably get it online, but.
It won't be for a while.
Yeah, but, no, it's, all of his issues are rescheduled, or at least until December 8th. And that could, and that could change as well.
Okay.
He could, he could possibly not come in on the 8th.
I'm gonna leave in a minute, you'll have all the time.
That's fine.
I am, is there a way, if he were to present anything on the 8th? And, you know, you always announce it in front of every meeting, that I have an opportunity to respond to any of this stuff, but I won't have seen it. So, if he were to come in on the 8th, would you see something ahead of time?
No, we won't see it, his engineer told me that, that he, or he told me his engineer was not completing, had not completed the work. Though I don't anticipate seeing anything before.
Somebody was out there measuring earlier this week.
I mean, like I said, he could potentially have it ready or not. I guess, if there's some concerns that you have, write them down and send them in anyway, even if, you know, just.
Okay, well, all I can do is comment on the one I've seen, I guess.
Yeah, and, and send in what you have for concerns, so that we can read them.
Okay, because I mean, they might have been addressed.
Yeah.
I mean, it's as silly as, there's no scale on a drawing, and what is mentioned doesn't match the scales on the drawings. So, I don't know what they're really building.
So, yeah, just, if you have anything, just write it down, and.
Just so you know, I'm a licensed civil engineer, so, as it were.
Well, then you definitely know what, you probably know exactly what they're doing then.
No, what's worse is I know that they don't know what they're doing.
But she's a structural though, so.
I am structural, I'm licensed civil and structural.
Glenda?
It is Glenda, I recognize you, and we'll catch up.
Okay, Scott, take it away.
I do have other plans that I colored, so that might be easier to.
Okay.
I get my own, wow.
You get your own.
So, Scott Franco, some New Hampshire land consultants here with Mike and Denise Galant. Let me get notes. So, we're here tonight to talk conceptually about their property, they own property in Deerfield as well as Nottingham. The thick black line through the drawing is the town line. What they'd like to do is subdivide two lots in Deerfield, and leave the remainder of Deerfield land connected with the Nottingham as one big piece. Went through the regulations, and it appears that you can do a private road in Deerfield for up to three lots, or actually up to four if you want to do certain upgrades. That's the question, we just want to get confirmed. And the lot, and they will probably end up building in Nottingham, so the access would come from Deerfield into Nottingham. The biggest thing is allowing subdivision on a private road, and it appears you allow it, but we just wanted to come in and talk with the board and and make sure that that is the case. Nottingham allows it too, up to three lots, and we are scheduled to go to Nottingham on the 8th of December to talk about the property as well.
So, what you're gonna do is access the Nottingham part of the property from that cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Okay.
So, existing, it's on Nottingham Road 250, 206 Nottingham Road. And existing property in Deerfield is, there's a 50-foot strip that was left from an older subdivision that was done to the backland. It's about 730 feet before it opens up into the larger piece. What we're proposing would be two six-acre lots, and then the remainder land, as well as the Nottingham staying as one piece. Under the subdivision regulations, section 207, I believe you allow up to four lots on a private road. And then the road, road width and construction is based on the number of vehicles per day, at 10.1 per lot, starting at 12 feet and going up. In that there's adequate emergency access vehicles, adequate access for that. And Nottingham is similar, they allow up to three lots on a private road. In Deerfield, there's 66.4 acres, and then in Nottingham, there's the 29.7. There is a house currently on the 66.4 that I believe your son or.
My daughter.
Daughter's living in right now. And that's shown as approximate location on the plan. There is a road that goes throughout the property that is drivable with a four-wheel drive, but needs upgrading.
I guess one question that immediately comes up is, is there gonna be a deed restriction, that there be no further subdivision on the Deerfield lot?
If you've got deed restrictions saying that you wouldn't subdivide it further, is that something you would entertain, or?
Yes, yeah, the whole purpose of this is more, for our lifetime, it's a kind of a family project.
This would run, run with the law, so nobody could subdivide it in the future.
Yeah, I mean, we would.
Right, and we could up the force, right?
Right.
No, we, our whole point is to have the land, to have our family on it.
Right, no, the only, the only issue here is that it certainly is, would be possible to further subdivide it. And if that, unless, unless you have a deed restriction preventing any further subdivision, dividing on that large lot, that we would have to consider it as a possible future subdivision, and therefore you couldn't come in under a private road.
Well, wouldn't it be if they, if somebody did come in at a later time to subdivide it, then everything would have to be brought up to town standard?
No, there would be, you'd have to say, "We're not gonna do it." Because the ordinance says, "If private way is unlikely to serve more than four dwelling units, it shall be constructed following the minimum specifications." So, certainly, we look at it and say, gee, you could certainly get quite a few more lots out of it. And so, the only way to get around that is to say there'll be no further subdivision on that remaining large lot.
So, you're gonna, are you gonna upgrade the existing road?
Right now, you can access.
Are you trying to leave it the way it is?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have to put in some sort of cul-de-sac, probably for emergency use, to be able to turn around safely and easily.
And then?
But past where the lots would be?
Yeah.
It's gonna stay the same.
Okay. But you are gonna access the piece that's in Nottingham from the cul-de-sac?
Yes, yes, within that road that would be upgraded.
Okay, so, are you gonna have like a 50-foot right-of-way over to the Nottingham side?
Well, that would just be one big piece, so.
Okay.
It would just be a driveway.
But because it's in Nottingham, you could, you can, you could build lots over here.
I didn't follow that.
Well, I'm not saying they're going to.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is if, if you're gonna have access to the Nottingham lot, you, you know, you probably want to show that. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do this now, you might as well do that as well. Then that way, it's all on the plan, and everybody knows. And what that does is that it allows you to, to have access to that. But if you, if you start building in here, you're more than likely gonna have to upgrade your road. So, I'm not saying you're doing that.
Right, right.
I'm just saying.
At this time, it's just gonna be one lot, so it would be.
Right, so just, just keep that in mind, that if you, you start, you increase the amount of use on this.
Yeah, catch up.
You'd still have to come back.
And get approval.
Get approval for it.
Right. If they did more lots in Nottingham.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, they did basically fall under the same thing we did with Northwood.
Right, right.
Saying, because the only access would be a road in Deerfield, and then.
It's through Deerfield, and you're bringing, you know, you'd be increasing the use. And technically, in order for Northwood Fire Department, oh, excuse me, Nottingham Fire Department to come here, they'd have to come in through Deerfield. And I'm not saying that, it's a matter of who gets there first, it doesn't matter. It's just, it's what, it's a, something that you guys might want to factor in on how you decide to do this finally, that's all.
So, on the deed restriction, that would, that would go in there, would be no more than four lots, is that kind of?
Well, you basically could get, what, one more, one more lot on this.
Yeah, that would be like a Smith.
Yeah, yeah, this, it's.
On this, in the Deerfield section.
Right.
And then if you decided to, I know it's your property, so, but if you decided to do stuff on the Nottingham section of your property, you would, you know, like I said, you could do whatever you have to do there, but you'll have to upgrade the road, because you're increasing your car count on it.
But actually, if we, you look at the ordinance itself, we're talking a total of four dwelling units being served by that road. And if they're doing, doing stuff, if they're doing stuff in Nottingham, they can't do.
Four there.
They can't do four over there either, because then it would be eight, and.
Right, really what they could do is one more lot in Deerfield, and then a lot in Nottingham.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Well, yeah.
You could do that for, no matter how you look at it, and then if you decided to increase, you'd have to upgrade your road.
Yeah.
So, like, if they could do three here, one here, the road's okay.
Right.
But once they go to five, you gotta upgrade the road.
But they can't go to five, because they're gonna be doing a deed restriction, saying you can't.
Right, well, that's, that's if they do that.
Right.
The deed restriction would only be for the Deerfield property anyway.
Well, the road says no more than four, the ordinance says no more than four.
Right.
Period. Doesn't say in Deerfield or Nottingham, it just says no more than four.
The deed restriction, wouldn't that go for the whole piece, because if you didn't do the deed restriction for Deerfield and Nottingham, there's potentially increasing the usage on the road.
It would depend, yes, it would have to depend on how they do all of it.
Right.
And with that deed restriction into place, if they were going to put one more place, yeah, if they were gonna put that one single place in Nottingham, then they could get away with just doing a regular driveway from the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Over, and you wouldn't have to upgrade that, but the deed restriction would be into place for both pieces.
For the whole lot.
Right.
So, in other words, you'd be able to build your four lots that you wanted, and you'd have to call it quits at that point.
And on the, on the road construction, it said it was in a graduated level of, amount of traffic on it. Is there something in the regulations that points to?
Something in the subdivision regs that cover that.
Oh, the car count?
Yeah, I think it goes, goes up to.
I thought UNH said 13 cars per house, per unit.
The regulation says 10.1, but.
10, yeah, yeah. Basically, I think it's for, for that number, I think we're looking at 18.
Yeah, I think it was 18, because it's like a Smith.
Right, yeah, right.
You, Pete, you keep saying Smith, is there one that was recently approved that I could look at that?
When's the last Smith we did? It's been a while.
It has been a while, yeah.
One, one that I did was for John DeFranzo, and that's like 10 years ago now, more, 12. Can't think of what else we did.
Bill did one.
Bill was a Smith.
Yeah. Because yours is what, 18 on yours, so, as the width of the road?
Harriet's didn't work.
Yeah.
Harriet's didn't work.
Oh, what's her name up on the mountain there?
Going up 43?
Yeah, Bob Griffin.
Oh, that, yeah, but she didn't have four lots.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She just did the one.
Just one, yeah.
She added one, well, made it two, but.
Right.
One that's more like a road, Scott, is John DeFranzo's, and his was built in 2008.
Okay.
His is like, more like a, an actual subdivision.
Yeah.
Even though it's a Smith, you know, it's got guard rail, paving, and all that stuff. That's, that's the one that I, I can't really think of any other that we've had, that were like a road.
Not recent, yeah.
And this could say gravel, right, 18-foot wide gravel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would be, be gravel all the way from Nottingham Road back into the, into the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, right now, it's, it's, you can access the house pretty, pretty good, once you get past that, it's, it gets rough, but drivable.
I can't see as well anymore, it's uphill the whole way?
Downhill to.
That's where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Downhill till just past the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't really been maintained past the house.
Okay. So, all the water's going this way.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not going on Nottingham Road.
Right. You gonna have any problems with grades going after the house? You got a 10%, 10% max?
What's the scale on this, I know you don't have one on here, is it inches 100?
Uh, no, it's like 160, it was just to get the whole plot on there.
Okay, so it's 160 per inch?
Yeah.
So, it's pretty steep after the house?
Yeah.
So, you've got, I'm guessing here, Scott, from the cul-de-sac, up to the house, you got about a 40-foot drop, roughly?
400 to 360.
Yeah. 10, 20, 30, yeah.
Can you say it's, what, 160?
Yeah.
Foot to the inch? That's my, 160, yeah, 300, 350 down there. So, yeah, you've got, you might have some problem with, with that drop.
Are you just trying to keep the cul-de-sac?
Brought it down to that.
Online with the existing driveway, is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, and then brought it down to a flatter area.
If you have a problem keeping the 10%, you might have to like, kick that cul-de-sac towards the Nottingham line, just to kind of.
Yeah.
To, to lose your, your pitch. So, if you, you know what I'm saying, kind of tuck it back in towards the Nottingham line.
Yeah.
Will help you on your grades.
Kind of a curve in here?
Yeah, yeah, kind of start curving from here.
Yeah.
To get this over to here. And that would help you on your 10%. Because if you had a hill like that, you'd have plenty of dirt to push into.
Yeah, right.
You know, kind of like Milford. That, that, that's probably the only thing that you might have a hard time with, is that, you know, once you look at it a little bit longer, you know, you can figure it out. You know, just tucking it off to the right as you look, if, as you look at it, would, would help you on your grades.
Another question I had.
Is that blue line is the new boundary for that house lot, correct?
Yeah, there should have been another blue line in the middle too, there's actually two lots there, one, two six-acre lots.
Right, well, I see, I see the first one, it says number one, and then number two, number two has the, the house that's on there.
Right.
So, that blue line in, in the cul-de-sac that comes off perpendicular?
Yeah.
That is gonna be the new property line for the existing house?
Right.
Okay.
So, I don't think I've, I've done it in Deerfield, but asking for a waiver for a full boundary survey, obviously, on this one. We would, we would ask that, and just do the survey in the area where we're chopping the lots off?
Yeah. And just, we'd want a road profile on the, from the, the house down. Well, the whole, the whole road. You know, just put stations on it in the profile, so we can just look at it.
But you, you may want to think about adding an extra lot in here, so you don't have to come back into us again. And since you only can have four, you'll be, you'll be done.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you guys got stuff you need to talk about, how about what you want it to be when you're done? So, yeah, I mean, because if you're, if you're doing the subdivision, you might as well go for everything that you want, all at once, so you don't have to come back. But, but that's completely up to you, we're not, we're not telling you, you have to do that.
I'd love to think that we'll be around when it grand time, because ours is pretty, it should be something.
Would that change the, the road width, or could that still be an 18-foot road?
Yeah, I think, I think it would still go 18.
If it's a Smith subdivision, if you have four lots, 18 feet wide, we can, we can go with that.
Right.
Anything else that you guys have questions on?
Oh, the Smith, I'm thinking right now, the, it's a major, not Major Simpson, but.
Yes, the one that used to be T-Bo.
Yeah, right.
That started 12 years ago too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Major John Simpson Way.
Right.
Did he pave that?
No.
Okay, that's gravel, so, right, right down here, if you go straight across down past the fire department, on the right-hand side, just by the power lines.
Just after power lines, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a, a Smith road. And he's got, how many lots did he have?
He's got four.
Yeah, he's got four there.
He's got four.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that was one that, that was going on from 2006 to.
That's the sight distance on Nottingham Road, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at the end where the driveway is.
It's gonna be a road.
Left and right, what do you have for sight?
Tight distance.
I, I've only been there once, see left and right when you're pulling out your driveway.
When you pull at the end of the driveway and you're leaving, do you have a long?
I think it's pretty good.
Yes.
I, I bike that, that route fairly frequently, and it is, it's pretty, pretty good sight distance there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right across where the horse.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, we're going to Deerfield on, or Nottingham on the 8th, and.
Okay.
One time, um.
Go ahead.
Question I got is, if it's a private road, do you name it?
Yes, you have to name it. And that name has to go before the Board of Selectmen to be approved. And so, you have to decide on the name beforehand. And so, Scott can end up putting it on his plans, but. I get, the, the big thing for the Selectmen is just to make sure that the, whatever name you end up choosing, isn't very similar to an existing name right now. So, when you all call 911, they'll go, "Which road is this?"
Yeah, yeah.
And with this, um, you talk about the, the restrictions, so, in order for this to move forward, we need that deed restriction to say four, based on this plan, right? I mean, thinking ahead of time, if we're long gone, and our grandchildren want to add more lots, is that never gonna be a possibility? If they decided to, you know, get a road along and access it, it's, you know, like-
Well, they have to give them back in and redo the whole thing?
Yeah, right.
So, if, if they wanted to get rid of a deed restriction?
Yeah.
You would have to-